Members of council, we arrive as individuals with unique ideas and experiences, but all with a desire to fulfill the needs of others. I ask that you use reason, wisdom, and empathy in your decisions today to take into account the implications your decisions will have now and in the future. We should all plant an acorn, even though we may not live, to hear the wind rush through its leaves or the joyous laughter of children playing in the comfort of its shade. We plant the seed for the benefit of future generations. Thank you. Stand for the motion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Herniman.
Here.
Councilmember Kayler.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
And Councilmember Snee.
Here.
Let the records show six of the seven members of council are present. At this time, I'd like to announce the public hearing for the consideration of ordinance 2024-86, just an ordinance responding to petition number 2024-04, vacating the alley off of East Market Street, running through, running north-south between lot number 62 of George's, George, George Viege's addition and lot number one of Viege's replat of lots 63 through 67 of George Viege's addition in the first ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio. So at this time, anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium and direct their questions to myself. Okay, I will close the public hearing at this time. Minutes from October 21st, 2024, regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Any questions, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Anyone from the long community planning committee have a report.
No report, Madam President.
Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and labor relations, Councilmember Hayes.
Thank you, Madam President. A meeting, a personnel and labor relations committee meeting was held in city chambers on October 28th, 2024. Purpose of this meeting was to discuss the mayor's request for legislation 24-43. This is an appointment of Skylar Metter to the Architectural Board of Review. Attending were committee members John Hayes, Cheyenne Thacker, and John Kayler. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson and Law Director Zachary Fowler. Councilman Hayes called the meeting to order at 5:15 PM. Hayes discussed the letter sent to the committee by the appointee regarding interest in the position. Thacker and Wilkinson noted the appointee's previous relevant projects downtown. Hayes asked the law director about stipulations for members of the Architectural Board of Review, and the law director outlined the established criteria. All committee members agreed that the appointee would be a great fit on the Board of Review. Hayes motioned to have the law director prepare legislation to accept the mayor's appointment, and Councilman Kayler seconded. The motion was carried on a vote of three to zero, and with no other business, the meeting adjourned at 5:21 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions on that report? All right, recreation and public property, Councilmember Snee.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
No report at this time, Madam President.
And economic development and downtown planning, Councilmember Herniman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. We are now under committee of the whole. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? All right, we are now under reports of the officers. His honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. As I reported last time, the leaf bags are available at several stores around town. Please check the City of Tiffin websites under the news link to find out where those are for sale. And those will be picked up by Public Works, and I believe they started last week, so they are ready to pick up those leaf bags. Just pile them out there by the curb, not in the street, just by the curb, and they will be picked up. The Veterans Honor Bus made a couple of successful trips to Washington, DC. They depart and return to the fairgrounds, and the good time was had by all. I was out there to, like, see them off and see them back, and it was, it was great. Coming up on November 11th is Veterans Day. Just want to say thank you to all of our veterans. Thank you for your service, and thank you for our freedoms. And now we have time, and we're going to hear from the Chamber of Commerce, Bryce and his team.
Good evening, members of council, and I just want to thank you for obviously having us here today. The reason for being at the tonight's meeting is that we kicked off our Love Local campaign on November 1st, and that really encompasses, you know, a comprehensive approach to supporting small businesses here in Seneca County throughout the holiday season, obviously with the uptick in spending through the holiday season. It's our goal that we educate our community on how important it is to support our small businesses. We launched our first Love Local campaign a number of years ago, and really played off American Express's Small Business Saturday. But obviously, as a community, we should support our small businesses through the entire year, but again, with the emphasis on the holiday spending and making people aware of what we have available in Tiffin and Seneca County. When we first started this campaign, you know, we've done some videos, we've done window clings, and some other efforts to really help promote, whether it be through social media that, last year, we reached over 300,000 people on social media just to promote, again, the people behind the small businesses. We're all fairly fortunate that we're in positions that every week that we, you know, or every two weeks, we get a paycheck that comes our way, and we know what we're going to get, and we can budget, we can plan. Obviously, the small businesses in our community don't have that great fortune. They ride, you know, every single day, depending on who walks in their door, who chooses to support them. And we've done, really, I think the big thing is promoting the people, the people who take the risk, that start the small businesses, because, you know, every year's different, especially this year with inflation and other factors. A lot of our small businesses have had a rough year, and I think that, you know, it's our goal that we support them through the holiday season especially, and really get them, one thing to note, obviously, when you support a small business, a $100 bill from every $100, $67 is kept locally in this community, whether they be, you know, hiring local people, whether it be supporting the local ball programs, or, you know, those different initiatives. And then we were just at the county commissioners last Thursday, the sales tax, you know, the county receives, and obviously helps offset for a lot of, you know, the EMS and emergency response, and a lot of those departments that are supported through sales tax here locally. But, you know, really, again, want to promote our Love Local season and how important it is that we get out and understand why keeping our dollars here locally makes a difference. Again, they hire our local people, they do so much more with those dollars that maybe a big box chain obviously doesn't do and have the impact. So with that, I'm going to also turn over Marissa, who's going to add a little more to it and talk about a new initiative for this year.
Thank you, and good evening, members of council. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. As Bryce mentioned, we try to promote loving local all year round, and a lot of places you'll see that shop small motto, which we obviously encourage, but we try to focus on loving all things local. So whether it's employing local people to do a job at your home, or employing them within your business, or having local services, or eating at local restaurants, there are so many things that people don't realize that you can do that supports a local organization or somehow keeps money here in our community. So on the one side of the handout you received, talks a little bit about what to expect for the 2024 campaign. So we have social media posts going out, and then also continuing education to our residents of Seneca County and beyond that of what the pillars of loving local are and why you should do it. So those are the economic impact, the job creation, a higher quality of products and services, and then this idea of supporting your neighbor is that you see when you give money to someone in a local business that, like Bryce mentioned, puts food on their table versus if you're giving it to a larger corporation, they don't see that impact directly. So as part of the 2024 campaign, we're excited to launch the Love Local Lounge. So obviously, during Love Local season, we do our best to support the businesses, but we also want to support those who are supporting our businesses. So the Love Local Lounge will be on Small Business Saturday, so as people are out supporting our local businesses and doing their part, we want to do our part to make sure that they have a place to go and relax. So it'll be hosted at our office on Small Business Saturday. We have lots of chamber members and local businesses, so furniture from E-Walls, that you have a comfy place to sit down if you want to drop your significant other off. We'll also have a TV from Ralphs playing the OSU versus Michigan game. We will have snacks from your local favorites, we'll have swag and giveaways from other local businesses as well. So just an idea that you can support your local business, but we're there to support you too and help spread awareness about what that is. So we invite all of you to stop by if you'd like, and we're very excited about this season. And again, thank you so much for your continued support that allow us to support our local businesses.
Thank you. November 30th, I'll be there.
Perfect.
That's awesome.
We'll say D and C. I want the touches. We'll mark it.
Okay.
May I do a proclamation for tonight still, or for the Love Local season?
I did not create a proclamation.
No worries. Awesome. So we'll get a photo with you guys at the end of the meeting with the Love Local that we'll use her mode on social media as well. So, thank you.
But I do want to just stay up there for a second. Because, was it earlier this week or last week? We got a surprise from Bryce and Marissa, who stopped by to present the city of Tiffin with the Midwestern Travelers Best Ohio Small Town nomination. So that's awesome, and an article will appear in the 2024 Midwestern Travelers magazine.
Yep, so that press release is going out tomorrow morning. We'll have more information on it that talks about all of the, there's a number of organizations in Seneca County that receive one best of best, so we'll talk about that, but the city of Tiffin won best small town in Ohio, which is really cool.
So every Tiffin resident and all of us should be very proud, I believe, of all the work, and most of this work is done by Destination Seneca County Chamber and all the events that you put on and do and promote. That's awesome to get people coming into town and recognizing Tiffin as a place to go.
Thank you.
I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
No, so we want to thank council for, a couple of years ago, you guys allocated $25,000 in lodging tax and support of Destination Seneca County, and those dollars really do go a long way in supporting our efforts and show that the partnership between the city, the county, to ensure that Seneca County really is the best place to live, work, play, and visit. So thank you to council for their continued support, and we look forward to more exciting initiatives as we move into the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Awesome. All right, that takes us to Clerk of Council Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to call your attention to the ordinances that we have for tonight. We talked about this a little bit earlier, but ordinance 2024-90, 91, 92, and 93, we were asking suspension, so just wanted to say a little bit about all four of those ordinances. 24-90, this is asking for $25,000 more dollars for income tax refunds. We had an income tax refund request come in. We do not have enough left in the budget to process that refund. It would also take more than what we have left. So the amount that we're asking for, we can process that refund and still have a little bit left for the rest of the year in our budget in case we have any other ones that come up. 2024-91, we had a donation to the police department for Safety City. They would like to purchase Safety City tricycles with that, so we would like to get that appropriated as soon as possible so those tricycles can be bought. 24-92, this is the one that has all kinds of reductions from several funds that you'll see that are currently in the budget, and these are projects that are either finished, and there is no need for any more of what is budgeted. It's not going to be used, it's unneeded funds, so we'd like to clean that up. There are some other funds where we're going to take those funds out of the budget because they're not happening until next year. So this is kind of a budget cleanup, and it's nice to suspend it to get everything ready for year end. This helps me get started because what you'll see, the last ordinance for the year, you're going to see a whole bunch of changes for the end of year. Most of them are reductions for the same reasoning, things are moving forward to the next year. There are funds where things have completed, and we don't need those in the budget anymore. So this helps me get started on that because you'll have a whole list of those. There'll be so many that we'll be able to talk about, and I'll explain to you what those are. This at least gets these started because they're completely finished. Some of the other ones that you'll see, we're still paying invoices on, so we're not quite finished with those yet, so we'll wait on those. And then the final one, 2024-93, this is for our electric bills that we talked about earlier. We want to make sure that we have enough in our budget to pay the next bill when it comes in. What we found is that we were being overcharged on some of these accounts. We're in the process of getting all of that credited back to us, but this will help us make sure that we can pay the next bill until all of that gets streamed out. Any other questions?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Director of Law, Zach Fowler.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just a few things. One, I think I had mentioned in the past that when property's annexed into the city, the, you know, the city boundary will change, but the township boundary that property came from doesn't automatically change. We actually have to petition the county to change the township boundaries to make that happen. That was once done in 2005, where they took all property that had been annexed, basically since the city's inception up to 2005, and had updated the boundaries to match the city's boundary at that time. We need to do 2006 to present. So once we have that annexation done, I've had some conversations with county prosecutor's office just to make sure they were, we were on the same page as far as the process. Now that we're clear on that, it's your prerogative as far as when, but at any point, we should introduce that ordinance to essentially authorize, what was done in the past, you authorized the law director to submit the petition to the county. It would be to update Hopewell and Clinton Township their boundaries to match the city's boundaries. So I can give that to you, I just need to know who maybe wants to sponsor that. My thought was probably long community planning, but Councilmember Kayler's not here tonight. I can have that discussion unless somebody else is jumping up and down, what's their name on another piece of legislation, and I can put anyone's name on it that would like to sponsor it, and then we'll get that in and make that process go.
Yeah, I'll sponsor it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. The only other thing that I, well, I got two other things. One is Bridget had kind of asked before we started about the liquor control notices. Just to explain real quick, you'll see on the back page, there's a change in ownership. That's what this is for. So the ones for Benchwarmers, there's a change, there's a change in ownership, the other ones for X-Cray, so that's all. Those are four. The last thing, just to note, is since in the spirit of tomorrow being Election Day, we'll have election next year. Council members at large, your term expires at the end of 2025, as is council president. So if you're rerunning, don't forget to get your petition in. You've got up until February 5th, 90 days before the primary, to get your petition filled out, get your, I think it's 50 signatures for you guys at large, and get those turned in. So go to the board elections, don't forget your petition, get that going. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Reesner.
This is from, carry on from the last meeting. I reviewed the credit card report, the quarterly credit card report, and I'd like to make that motion to accept the law director's credit card report.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to accept the law director's credit card quarterly report. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second.
Some motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Reesner. All right, we are now under written communications.
Thank you. We have Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-24-59, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the Finance Department budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-24-59, is prepared this evening as ordinance 24-90.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-24-60, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the Police Department budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-24-60, is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-91.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-24-61, to amend the 2024 budget to reduce projects finishing below budget or moving to next year.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-24-61, is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-92.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-24-62, to appropriate funds into the budget to pay for electric charges for the remainder of the year.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-24-62, is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-93.
Then we have a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for revised stock ownership of Benchwarmers Restaurant Delivery LLC.
Thank you. This notice will be sent to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
And Ohio Division of Liquor Control Notice for revised stock ownership of X-Cray in Tiffin.
This notice will also be assigned to Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
And that concludes written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. We are now under motions, any motions this evening? All right, that takes us to resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 2024-42, introduced by John Hayes. A resolution approving mayor's appointment of Skylar Metter to serve an unexpired term on the Architectural Board of Review from the date of this resolution through December 31st, 2025.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 2024-42. Councilmember Hayes.
Yeah, I'd like to move for passage of Resolution 2024-42.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 24-42. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Hayes.
Yeah, again, this is Skylar Metter to the Architectural Board of Review. From what the committee heard, sounded like a great fit. It also had high praise from both the mayor and the city administrator. Send some comments over.
Awesome, thank you for that. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler? I'm sorry. Jones?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
And Snee?
Yes.
Resolution 24-42 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-86, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance responding to petition number 2024-04, vacating the alley off of East Market Street, running north-south between lot number 62 of George Viege's addition and lot number one of Viege's replat of lots 63 to 67 of George Viege's addition in the first ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-86.
Ordinance number 2024-90, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the Finance Department budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-90. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 24-90, suspending city council's reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance 24-90. Is there a second? Councilmember Snee.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Reesner.
Okay, and this is, this appropriates funds, has to do with the income taxes for refunds. The amount is $25,000 into account 5,800.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
And Snee?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero, and I'll vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
And Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-90 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-91, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the Police Department budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-91. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 24-91, suspending city council's reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 24-91. Is there a second? Councilmember Herniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. This is for the Safety City and the police donations for tricycles, and this goes into the Supplies and Materials General Fund, 101 General Fund account 5,600. The amount, $1,935.80.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snee.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero, and I'll vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-91 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-92, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to reduce expenses in the 2024 budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-92. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 24-92, suspending city council's reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance 24-92. Is there a second? Councilmember Jones.
I'll second that, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. This reduces funds not needed by certain projects that are already finished or not occurring until 2025, and it looks like there's five different funds being affected with this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
And Snee?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
And Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-92 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-93, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the 2024 budget for electric expenses.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-93. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 24-93, suspending city council's reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 24-93. Is there a second? Councilmember Herniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. This deals with electric bills. There's been a shortage because of what we're charging. There is a credit pending from the electric company.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we will vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Snee?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
And Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-93 passes with a vote of six to zero.
And that concludes the legislation.
Thank you. That takes us to other business. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? Councilmember Thacker.
I'd like to propose to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee that we do not request a hearing for the two liquor control notices just because they're, they're not a change in address. It's the same business. It's just a transfer of stock ownership in the actual liquor permit. So is that cool with all of you?
Absolutely.
Sounds a change of what?
It's a change in stock ownership.
Oh, okay. All right.
Awesome. Then I would like to ask the clerk to respond with requesting no hearing for both.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other business to come before council this evening? Councilmember Herniman.
Everybody get out and vote tomorrow. Exercise, right?
Absolutely. Awesome. Well, if there's nothing else to come before council this evening, we can adjourn. Thank you, guys. Thank you for the extra time tonight.
Thank you all for coming in early. Appreciate that to help us get through the budget. This is a good time.
It didn't seem early with the dark hour.
I know.